Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It is 4:00 PM. We'll start our June 23 meeting. If we could get a roll call, please.
Sorry, Mayor, Householder.
Here.
Commissioner Blanchard.
Here.
Commissioner Crawford.
Here.
Commissioner Hardy.
Here.
Commissioner Shirley.
Here.
At this moment, all who are able to do so, if you would please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have no -- excuse me -- awards and proclamations today, so we'll open up to the citizens' forum. This is an opportunity for anyone from the public who has anything they'd like to bring before the commission that's not on today's agenda to do so. Seeing no one, we'll move on to the consent agenda. We're just mentioning -- well, I might just check since you just walked in. We're doing citizens' forum. Did you have anything for us?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll give you some.
Sure. We didn't want to leave you out because we were just walking in.
Last week, Norman Mall, 7532 West Pleasant Hill Road, out in the county.
Okay.
The issue was brought up about how come we're not snagging companies that go by? Has anybody that followed those companies and asked them why they didn't stay here? Yeah, see, now he wants me.
Maybe they're calling you now to tell you.
Other words, public perception of Salina-Saline County outside of the state, is that part of the problem? How people are acting here in Salina? Public perception is a lot, and it's even into Tennessee. I've called the Chamber of Commerce down there, and they said, "Salina's got a problem." So, we need to change your attitude at home before you go looking outside. But I just wanted to ask, have you ever thought about companies that looked here and then they left, besides tax advantage or something? I mean, I'm kind of following up with Mr. Hardy. He kind of says, "Why aren't we grabbing them? How come?"
Thank you, Nora.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know specifically. I mean, just if there's anything that we look at, I mean, I know the Chamber of Commerce and some of them have looked at whether they follow up with them to ask maybe why certain places don't locate. There could probably be a lot of reasons. I mean, it could be maybe we didn't have the type of employees they were looking for skilled in a certain stat or something. Some things just aren't fits for certain cities, but I think it is a good point, and that is to follow up with maybe companies that don't decide to go here just to find out exactly why. I think information's always good, so.
And then change your attitude.
Yeah.
Okay.
Great, thank you. Anyone else on that? Okay. See, and then we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of June 16, 2014. Item 6.2, authorize the purchase of three police package vehicles from Long MacArthur Ford in the amount of $80,877, and the purchase installation of equipment from KCOM, Inc. in the amount of $26,700. Item 6.3, authorize the purchase of 25 additional Axon Flex and Body cameras for docking stations and the five-year video evidence storage commitment from Taser International in the amount of $98,941.31. And item 6.4, Resolution Number 14-7117, authorizing an agreement with USD 305, assigning three uniformed law enforcement officers to serve in the School Resource Officer Program.
Is there anything on the consent agenda that the commission would like removed or amended? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I would move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
A motion is second to approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? That motion carries 5-0. Moves us on to administration.
Item 7.1, award of contract for the Salina Levy Project, project number 13-2998.
Mr. Stack.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This project was bid last week and is the, kind of the final part of trying to get our levy, our Salina Flood Control Levy certified. We met with you about a year ago to talk about the two areas that are needing to be raised based on hydraulic calculations and flows in the Mulberry and Dry Creek, Dry Creeks basically on the northwest portion of town, one being along Section 4 near Thomas Park, just right south of Thomas Park there for about 1,000 feet, and the other one being near State Street around 2,700 feet in that area, needing to go up, not a whole lot, but a, you know, a couple tenths of a foot, up to six inches, and then a foot, have to be, has to be raised a foot at each structure. So, right at the, right at the structure, it goes up a foot. So, it'll, you'll see a little bit of a hump there. But bottom line is, that helps to, when there's a flood, water that is panted up against the levy has to go through the culvert, raises a little bit to push through the culvert, and that's, that keeps the water from inundating the city. So, we were happy to get three bidders. They were pretty widely spread. However, we did get a good bid from TNR Dirt. They're a local contractor. They have done some dirt work for the city before and for a lot of, they do a lot of subcontract work around for the contractors in town. We did check their references as far as they have built some dams and ponds and lagoons. They have, they're basically a dirt contractor, and that's what this job is. We feel like they're granted that they can do it. So, it, their bid is quite a bit better than APAC, who's definitely a reputable contractor. Smoky Hill's real busy, so we weren't surprised to see their bid being pretty high. Project budget for this project was $350,000, so we were glad to come in under that. And it's with sales tax funds, so we know funds are tight. So, we feel like this, you know, based on the dirt contractor that did get the lowest bid and the amount of money that we could save by getting this project done, feel like it's a good, good deal for the city. And construction-wise, 60 days from notice to proceed, that's pretty tight, but it's one of those where when you open up the levy, as far as you want to give them a short window to work and get it done as fast as possible. So, we'll be on the best we can to make that happen. They wouldn't start till August to September's timeframe probably anyway, so typically at those points, it's the lower flood season, so we shouldn't see, have a lot of concerns. We still have to have a flood contingency plan, but historical floods have been more spring and summer. July was, 2000, or 1993 was the, it was actually in July. Most people don't think of July as being a flood year or a flood month, but there was a time when it was, so we would try to keep an eye out on that, any flooding and any, any concerns, but the timing is pretty good for this to happen and be done by the end of the year. I did include the timeline for floodplain remapping, and so that's been an ongoing project with the city for many years, actually, and with the new, kind of a new floodplain remapping update, I gave you a kind of a timeline. So, if we can get this project completed in November or December of this year, and then we're able to proceed with the next phase of floodplain remapping, which, you know, possibly has some, an update to the flood maps from 1986, we feel like it'll be a good, a good update that'll be more realistic to current times, 25 to, what is it? 30, almost 30 years later. So, it's, it's, well, an update that'll need to occur, but the timeline, I tried to include how long that'll be. It'll still be a while before that happens, but this is the first part. If we get the levy certified, and then the floodplain remapping studies can go on. I will entertain questions.
Any questions for staff on this?
I have a floodplain question. I was just curious if sometime in the future we were able to increase the viability or usability of the river through town, would that affect our floodplain mapping or the levy requirements or any of that sort of thing?
Yeah, just depends on, right now, the current situation, where the, you know, it's an in and an out, basically an inflow pipe, and that is either open or closed depending on river, you know, flood seasons and size of the river in town or out of town, but any changes to that definitely could have some impacts on floodplain mapping. So, we just have to incorporate the two together, basically. So, if we do have to, if we change how run more water through town or do different types of approaches on getting water into the channel, there's ways to, you know, mitigate that on a different end to make sure we can get it out if we ever had to based on the flood or something. So, it's just more of a facilities, more of an operational, it's like the river channel currently has plenty of capacity right now. It's, it's the old Smoky River, and it doesn't take near as much water as it used to, so it's got plenty of capacity. But it'll be anxious to see what the floodplain remapping does for that area, to see if, what impacts that could have because we're not exactly sure.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment on this? Okay. Seeing none, I bring it back for any possible action.
I move we approve project number 13-2998 to DR and award the project to TNR Dirt Construction in an amount not to exceed $208,584.75, which includes a contingency of $10,000.
Second.
Have a motion as second to award the contractor Salina Levy Project, number 13-2998. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? That motion carries 5-0.
Item 7.2, Resolution Number 14-7116, authorizing the mayor to execute an owner's representative agreement with Frew Development LLC, setting forth the terms and conditions relating to Frew's proposed owner's representative services for the Salina Bicentennial Center and Fire Station Number One renovations.
Deion.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. As she stated, the item before you is our proposed owner's agreement with the firm that we are recommending. This is basically the third piece of the puzzle, if you will, as we've been going through this process. The first was a designer. The second piece was the construction manager at risk. The third piece is the owner's rep. We went through RFQ process very similar to the first two for this one as well, very thorough. We were very happy with the results that we had, the turnout, if you will, of proposals that we received, and ultimately with the recommendation we're making before your day. This one does have a unique twist in that we were able to take another project that had some similar timeframes and some likeness and combine it with this to really maximize the value and benefit to the, to the city with the use of the owner's rep. We've spoken to them obviously about that. They feel very confident and comfortable with both projects based on the timeline and how they align to do that. Having said that, I won't beat you up with a lot more information, but long story short, we are very comfortable with them. We did due diligence and did a lot of background checking. They've done a lot of like and similar projects in the arena world, and when I say that, not just in, in, very similar in terms of some sizes and different stuff like that to what we have and a lot of renovations. We felt like that were two very important pieces simply because those are unique when you're renovating and it's an arena. There was a lot of natural tie-in there, so that certainly helped their cause a lot as well. They're a little bit smaller firm. They are not a big, big firm. We like the attention to detail that they gave us. We were very, again, comfortable with the folks that they are assigning to the project, and as such, we're recommending that we do enter into an agreement with Frew. With that, I would open it up for questions.
Great, thank you. Any questions for staff?
I have a quick question for, maybe it's for Jason, perhaps because it has to do with, more with the fire station being added on to this, but, but I will say that in reading the packet and understanding the whole CMAR process, this looks like it's the last piece of that puzzle, so we're pretty well set to go, and so thank you for getting all those pieces put together and along with everything else you do, so. But the question is, is on the fire station. Are we pretty close to a point where the 12-month, for this 12-month period, that we're not going to have backend issues on, will we be able to complete the fire station in the same time of completion that we do with the, with the by-center?
Good question, Commissioner. The, right now, the fire department is soliciting qualified architects for that last phase to go through the list and then bring to you a recommendation to hire an architect to design the final phase of that project. I, I don't know if 12 months would get us all the way through the design period and the full construction period, but I wouldn't think, there's likely, there would likely need to be, I would think, some extension towards the end of that, but I think it would get you a good part of it. And a lot of it depends on how quickly we can get the designer in place and then how, how long it takes to design. Usually, it'll take a few months to design, but it depends on the complexity of the project, and this part really isn't as complex as the first, or the last phase was. The last phase was much more complex. Then you have the bidding timeframe, and then, of course, construction, and usually construction, and again, depending on complexity, could take anywhere from, say, seven or eight months to a year. This, I would expect, would go much faster, again, than the last phase when you're flipping people around and changing spaces. So, all in all, I don't think 12 months would probably get all of it, but it would take us into there and it'd give, it'd take us deep enough in construction to have a good idea of how many, you know, two months, three months, whatever we'd need to extend at that time, I believe.
Okay, and then would that owner's rep be available for some of the pre-construction activities as well?
And that's the intent. Really, the question that was raised to us initially was would the construction manager at risk process be applicable to the, to this last phase of the fire station? When we look at it, we really feel it's fairly simple and not a real large scope, and that the CMAR process probably isn't necessary for this, but it led to conversations about whether or not utilizing the owner's representative at the front end would be a good value. And quite honestly, that's a place where you find significant value because that person and their expertise, whoever's brought on, in this case, Frew, would help us with the design aspects, even some contractual aspects, to look at all the documents, and so we get the advantage of having all that consultation early on, and then it helps them make surprises later. And then certainly, we use, use that person, in this case, as the construction goes on to make sure that things are going on as we expect them to and the building's constructed properly. So, I think there's huge benefit at the front end of this project.
Okay, so that person would basically take over most of the responsibilities, bless you, excuse me, most of the responsibilities that the chief had pretty much inherited and taken on in the last phase.
Yeah, we had our, you know, for this last phase, we had the chief, and then we had our internal building division supervisor whose real job is really more maintenance-oriented versus construction, large construction-oriented, but he is also, he'll, he won't be with us at that time looking at retirement. So, from a timing perspective, this is a good opportunity for a lot of reasons to utilize that process. I think we would do that anyway because of the scope of the project, and I think we're going to find a lot of value with that. So, yeah, there's a lot of reasons to do that, and, and you're right, that would take a lot of pressure off the department because a lot of times in these cases, we're asking them to do something that's not their expertise. They work hard, they try their best, but we're still limited in how effective we can be, and by bringing in somebody with that type of credential, that really helps us a bunch.
Right.
So, we really do appreciate that.
I would echo what Jason said. I think there's a lot of value on the front side with what I'd call the pre-construction services from going through not just the designer selection, but also packaging all the pieces that they do and finding opportunities to, you know, make it as efficient as possible. So, I do think that's a good piece to the puzzle.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Any public comment on this or questions or thoughts? Okay, seeing none, I would bring 7-2 back to the commission for possible action.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass Resolution Number 14-7116, authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement with Frew Development Group LLC, setting forth the terms and conditions related to Frew's proposed owner's representative services for the Salina Bicentennial Center and Fire Station Number One renovations.
Second. Have a motion as second. I always worry sometimes that second's not going to come. We're going to go through all this for nothing. Never know how long to wait. Have a resolution to approve, I'm sorry, a motion as second to approve Resolution Number 14-7116. All in, oh, sorry, any further discussion on this? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? That motion carries 5-0.
Item 7.3, approval of grant fund allocations for the 2014 Kansas Emergency Solutions Grant from the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation.
Mr. Hobby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor and Commissioners, we appreciate the fact that we have been back to you, a proposal from Kansas Housing Resources Corporation to granting of funds for the City of Salina and two agencies within the city. If you remember, back in April, we submitted recommendations and suggestions by three different agencies. Two of those agencies were awarded funds. The third agency did not have a complete application, therefore, we've asked for Kansas Housing Resource Corporation to explain exactly where we were lacking in that application process. But we have been notified, we were notified actually a month, a week ago today, last Monday, that James Chisholm from Kansas Housing Resources Corporation has allotted the City of Salina funds in two different areas. One would be with the Ashby House for $37,600. The second is from the Domestic Violence Association of Kansas for $31,500. This grant also allows us an administrative fee of approximately $1,868. Sue Klein is our lead person in the department who has helped put together this, this grant, as well as she and Louise Doobes work on a monthly basis to accept the requests for payments from each of these agencies, verify that the repayments are appropriate according to the funds that have been allotted, and then send those funds in for reimbursement to the city. So, we would, at this time, ask for you to allow the mayor to sign and the finance director to sign the documents associated with the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation, the grant for emergency solutions for the City of Salina for $70,968. I'd be more than glad to stand for any questions.
Great. Any questions for staff?
I was just going to ask you if these were the only ones that applied or these are the ones that were approved.
Well, these are the only ones that actually applied. We applied for $206,000, a little over $206,000 in April. We reached out to multiple agencies within the community. I think there were seven that were contacted, and the three were the only ones that completed the application. The application process has changed over the last couple of years. About three years ago, when they changed the name to Emergency Solutions Grant, the applications and the structure of the program has changed and has gotten a little
Harder.
A little harder to process and get the exact information that they would like for us to have in the application. So, these numbers have gone down.
I noticed several, several are not on here that have been on here in the past, and I just wondered if that meant that they couldn't meet the qualifications? And who's responding, I mean, is that, would that be the, that department that changes those?
Kansas Department of Housing and Resources Corporation are the ones in charge of the program, and they're the ones that make the decision whether or not the grant funds are allotted and to what value those grant funds are allotted.
And what the qualifications are.
Yes, ma'am.
And so, did these, do you know the nature of the denial? Was it that they, that they didn't qualify or they didn't provide adequate information?
It's not that they did not qualify. The agency qualified, and the information they, they requested and submitted for in the grant funds themselves was not adequate to supply the needs for Kansas Housing Resources Corporation. We have asked for specifics of the reasons why, and Mr. Chisholm said he would send that to us here at a later date.
Okay, and now, so the, so the process is, is did, and I'm just, I'm not picking on the Emergency Aid Food Bank, but they're the ones that got the one denied. Did they, did they submit the application through us or just on their own?
No, we, we send a notification, once we are notified by Kansas Housing Resources that there is going to be grant funds for the ESG grant, we send notification out to about five, six, seven different agencies within the City of Salina and to let them know that this is the requirements, and you'll notice on the front page of your blue sheet, there are certain segments, certain areas, each one of them can apply for. Each one of the agencies has a tendency to talk to the other to make sure that we don't load everything up in rapid rehousing, as an example.
Right.
We kind of spread the monies out, and they work together very well with that, and they send that information into us, and that information has specific requirements to go into the state, and this time, we did not meet 100% of those requirements on one of the agencies.
Yeah, because I noticed in the past, rapid rehousing was a pretty generously funded portion of this, was it not?
Yes, it was.
And now, it's, it's zero.
On homeless prevention was another area that was quite heavily funded in the last two, three years, but this year, we received nothing from.
Right, and we've had a number of groups that have gotten together with identifying homelessness as, as a problem. Is there, is there, is the lack of being, being able to put together the application, is there some way that we can work to help people fill these? I mean, are we already helping them fill these out? And, and this is more education than, than, I'm not criticizing, I'm just.
We, we strongly emphasize customer service, and we strongly work with Mr. Chisholm to come out prior to the submittal of the request to the City of Salina, and we just bundle up the, the requests from those agencies. And he has completed several days of training explaining exactly what he needs in the grant and exactly how to fill it out and who needs to sign it, and sometimes you don't get a signed application.
Because that's, you know, I look at this and, and $60,000 goes a long way in homeless prevention that, that the Emergency Aid Food Bank requested and didn't receive, so.
Well, and I noticed that Catholic Charities isn't on the list, and they usually always were on the list.
The last two years, they have not even submitted any information for an application, so.
That may be their change in director or something.
If it's useful at all, I believe it was a couple of years ago when Kansas Housing Resource Corporation kind of changed their expectations. We had a meeting with some of these agencies about the data gathering and tracking and reporting, and that seemed to be very problematic for some agencies, and, and this is just my estimation, but I think some of them were strategically deciding how difficult that was going to be relative to the grant funds and whether they could meet the requirements, and that may have factored into their choosing not to apply.
Okay. I don't know if you remember, but about three years ago, we had a certain allotment of funds, and not 100% of those funds were sent to us because the agencies were not eligible to meet certain requirements of those funds. They have really tightened up the requirements, so.
Okay. Going into the application process, then, do these agencies know or expect that they're only going to receive a portion of the request?
Yes, no. We, over the last few years, we have applied for at least $200,000, if not greater. I think we had one year, it was $342,000. It sticks in my mind, and we will get anywhere from, this is the lowest amount we've received in the last three years, up to $200,000. So, it's, they don't, they, they would like to have So it's, they don't, they, they would like to have 100% of the funds that they request, and we understand that, and it's their application that stands on their own merits. We do not alter the application, we just submit what's been submitted to us.
Do, do we, have we ever taken a look at, you know, why are our agencies being funded less than other towns around, and, and, you know, I just wonder, this is just the lowest I've seen.
It is the lowest I've seen.
And it kind of concerns me.
We have not completed a review of all the different agencies in the state of Kansas that receive funds from them. We do know that housing and urban development has reduced the amount of funds going to each one of the states, so that does have a factor in, in the funds that are solicited throughout the communities.
Any other questions for staff? Any public?
What else to ask?
No?
I don't know what else to ask, I just think it's strange that it's changed that much.
Okay. Bring it back for any possible action.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the staff recommendations for allocation of the 2014-2015 Emergency Solution Grants award to the City of Salina on behalf of two Salina agencies, Ashby House and D-Vac, in the amount of $70,968.
Second.
Have a motion as second to approve the allocation of the 2014-2015 Emergency Solutions Grant in the amount of $70,968. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries 5-0.
Item 7.4, second reading ordinance number 14-10739, amending chapters 5 and 35 of the city code by amending sections 5-25, 35-36, 35-40.2, and establishing chapter 35, article 12, to address placement of certain items on the public sidewalk in the C4, Central Business District, and to govern sidewalk dining in the Lee District. Item 7.4A, resolution number 14-7111, providing for the related administrative regulations.
We really need to go through this one again. Do you feel comfortable, or do we just sort of go with the, well, no, no, in all seriousness, or do we just want to go through, did we really change anything, or do we just want to do the old standard? Ordinance 14-10739 was approved on first reading since that time.
Yeah, I think you can do that, it's up to you. The, as we mentioned last week, there's some changes that you anticipated that are made by legal counsel. If you'd like them to hit those, they can. If not, and you're comfortable with it, you've seen it and read it, they're, from the public's perspective, they're pretty invisible, pretty transparent, there's no huge policy issues.
Mayor, if I may, the, in discussions during your study session with Mr. Andrew and Mr. Berger, we have identified one item that I think does require your attention from a policy standpoint, so it would appreciate the chance to at least take you through that.
So maybe skip your part and go to his part?
That was for me.
Yeah, yeah. I don't want to hear.
Well, just a quick question, was there anything on some of these administrative resolutions that were, that we did have questions on, like the sides of the enclosures and things like that?
I don't recall, I'll defer to Greg, but I don't believe there's any difficulty drawing those up and to meet the intent that you were looking for.
Okay.
And maybe we could come back to the specifics with questions. I know you had one on gateways and stuff, maybe we'll cover attorneys' part first and then come to ours. There you go.
All right.
Okay.
Appreciate that opportunity. No one is more important than anyone else in this room, I suppose, but I did not have a chance to confirm with the clerk as to whether the media and Ms. Hodges have been provided with a copy of the latest version. Could we be sure that they have one? Sorry for that.
The ordinance itself is the same as was distributed to you all this weekend, and I appreciate that opportunity. The, part of this has to do with the transition from what have been some promulgated regulations relating to those temporary items that have been permitted on the sidewalks in the C4 zone, somewhat related, but yet in many ways unrelated, to the sidewalk dining. If you'll look, please, at page two of the ordinance, section 35-40.2, that's, that's addressed in section three of the ordinance. The policy question that I think has been raised in our focus on the sidewalk dining is whether we anticipate continuing to allow furnishings on the sidewalk in the C4 Business District that would not be in an, in association with a sidewalk dining facility under the sidewalk dining facility license. And Mr. Andrew can speak in more detail to how that manifests itself and the policy considerations with that regard. When you look at that description of items under 35-40.2, the term outdoor furniture, am I correct that that was the reference? Outdoor furniture has been omitted in anticipation that that became part and parcel with the outdoor dining. The other detail to address in the, has to do with the other items that are listed there, the movable signs, movable planters, bicycle racks, flower pots, anything that you might think of associated with the downtown, whether all of those were intended just to be during business hours, or if we were speaking of just the signs during business hours. In completing our work on that modification, I very intentionally put the modifier "business hours" strictly in terms, or in front of placement of signs. In looking at the resolution, it spoke of that limitation in relation to signs, and I was, in an effort to be more precise, I may have been in error, but, but that's what we wanted to clarify with you all, and as I say, Mr. Andrew and Mr. Berger are more directly involved in the administration of these aspects of the city's program in the downtown area, and obviously, Ms. Hodges has a direct interest in this as well from SDI's standpoint. But if, if we could just be sure that we're all on the same page on those two issues, we can easily make sure that the ordinance and the resolution conforms to your preference.
I guess I might amplify then that, just by giving you a specific example. When this was originally adopted in 1999, and the, the planning staff has been administering this for the last 14 years, the, the two most popular items that we have worked with have been movable signs and sandwich board type signs, and then also outdoor furniture that gets put out on the walks and then put back in the biz, in the business at the end of business hours. And when Mr. Peterson, Mr. Bankston were working on this, we had been, the guidelines had allowed for flower pots and planters, but the ordinance actually did not, nor did it allow for bicycle racks. And so, we told Mr. Peterson, Mr. Bankston, while we're opening this up, can we make sure that we get bicycle racks and also flower pots and planters added? But in going over the, the latest draft, the, the guidelines that we've had for the last 14 years, and my specific example would be at Astra Bookstore, they put out tables and chairs sometimes during the day, when they close, they take them in, they, they put them indoors. They have a permit from the Lee District Design Review Board to do that, as do a few other businesses. The way that this was drafted, that would not, no longer be permitted. You would either be a full sidewalk dining cafe, or you would have nothing, and there would be no in-between. And so, I asked Mr. Bankston for opportunity to make sure that we were making a conscious decision, that we did not want to allow outdoor furniture under any circumstances except a permanent sidewalk dining facility that would have the furniture out all the time and, and barriers around the sidewalk, or it would be a fairly simple fix just to insert outdoor furniture back into the, the list. So, the question was, is that a conscious intentional omission, or was it unintentional because the focus was on the outdoor dining? But we do have circumstances like at Astra, where they may not want to have a sidewalk dining cafe, but they may want the ability to put furniture out. And then, as Mr. Bankston said, the other question is, should that be in the same category with signs? For the last 14 years, signs come out, the business closes, they go back in the business, they come out the next day, chairs and tables are out on the sidewalk, the business closes, they take them inside, and they might bring them out the next day, depending on weather. So that, that's the way it's worked for the last 14 years. So, our, our question when we reviewed this was, are we intentionally or unintentionally omitting outdoor furniture from the category? Is it like signs and planters and flower pots and allow that on a come and go basis, or is the only furniture we want out there something that's done as a permanent sidewalk dining? So, we wanted to make sure that that was addressed, and that there was a conscious decision made, so everyone understood it's either in or it's out.
I think it could go either way.
Well, I'll tell you, and correct me if I'm, if I'm off on this one, but, but I think if we were to view the, the outdoor, we're calling it outdoor dining, but it's actually outdoor, the outdoor enabling to serve
Drinking.
Alcoholic beverages, what requires the, the barrier. And how I'm viewing it, how I view that, and I thought that's how we were, we were viewing it, is that that's, that's an extension of the restaurant. So, I would say that if the removable furniture, the sign and everything else is within that enclosure, then it's just like being inside the building. And so, I would like to see, I would like, if at Astra wants to continue the way they're doing, they don't serve alcohol, then, then I don't want to make them have to do anything different than they're doing now. And, but if you want to serve drinks with dinner, that you have that extended portion, you extend the building, and at the end of the night, if everything is inside of your extended building, then I think you're okay there. Is that, is that where we are, or is that where we went away from?
Well, I think you've fairly characterized where we are, but the only thing that would be different is that, as it reads right now, it would not anticipate the non-formal enabling of the serving of alcohol. If, if in the case of at Astra, the way it is drawn now, they would not be able to simply place furnishings only in an, in an unenclosed area in front of their business.
Okay.
If we, if we want them to be able to continue to do that in anticipation of, or doing however they use them now, and not transitioning to the serving of alcohol with whatever else they might serve, then we would want to simply add back to that list in 35-40.2, outdoor furniture.
Outdoor furniture.
So they would be able to continue to do so without all of the, without all the involvements associated with a full.
All right. I'd like to add back.
Yeah, I'd like to do that too, because there's just too much regulation. They can't put their signs out, they can't put, sit out and have a cup of coffee. That's just too much regulation.
The other question would be then, for the outdoor enclosure furniture, that furniture would be allowed to stay outdoors throughout the dining season then?
That's correct.
Where they could just lock it up or whatever and not have to move it?
Because you would, you would have a formal license agreement where basically the city would be turning that area over to that premises. And that would not be the case with at Astra, where allowing them to temporarily occupy the sidewalk with some tables and chairs and then take them back in, just like they temporarily occupy it with a sandwich board sign and take it back in.
Are you saying then, in a formal enclosure, signs could be left outside if the owner chose to?
If that's what is part of the license agreement, yes.
Okay.
So with that, I under, if I understand the direction, we would simply add there then in 35-40.2 to the listing of those items, movable outdoor furniture.
Correct.
Then that takes us to the second question, and that is presently among that list, the only one limited to business hours only, is the, is the sign. Now, keeping in mind that we're outside of the, of the sidewalk dining arena.
Right.
We're strictly in the
At Astra phase.
Exactly, yeah, that exam, that, that type of situation. Are there any of those other items that you would want limited to business hours only?
Beside the sign and the movable furniture.
Well, right now, I don't know that we have decided on the movable furniture, that presently is the way it's been handled, is that correct?
Right.
We do not require flower pots or planters to be moved in and out each night. If you, if you bring out planters in front of your business, or flower pots, and you want to leave them out there, you may.
That's good.
I, I'm fine with signs and furniture.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Signs and furniture would be those that would be required to be business hours only.
Right.
The others could remain overnight or?
I'm fine with leaving the furniture outside, but it'd be stolen probably half the time, so.
Or blown away.
Or blown away or something, I mean, provided it was locked up or chained down, but it sounds like the majority would just soon have it inside, but.
Well, and if it does get blown, then you're talking about people tripping over it.
Yeah, that's true, too.
Because there's no one there to pick it up on after hours.
After hours, yeah, smarter move, so.
So if I'm understanding the direction, the business hours only would be related to signs and outdoor furniture?
Yep.
The other items, there would be no such limitation?
Right.
That does then translate to the resolution as well, which we will need to tweak just to be consistent with the direction that you all have just given. And if, if I've adequately articulated those modifications, I think it would be simply a matter of, if it's your wish to advance the ordinance on second reading and advance the resolution, we can do so on the basis of that direction that you've given, and simply refer to it as amended in the motion.
Okay.
Unless someone would rather go through those details, but that's, that's up to you all.
We might get out of here by five if we don't do that.
No, I don't want to do that.
So, was there any, did we need to go through any further questions, like his gate sort of opening sort of discussion before?
I think that's been addressed.
Yeah, we touched upon that last week, and we did have the benefit, Mr. Peterson had further discussion with ABC, and I don't know if you want to readdress that just specifically in terms of the results and the, what prompted the need to match the notes and the results of matching notes?
Well, Mayor and Commissioners, as you may recall from the first reading, Commissioner Hardy raised a question about whether the sidewalk dining area, if a restaurant desired to serve alcoholic beverages, would need to be completely enclosed. That was the original language that was used in the ordinance, and Commissioner Hardy cited some examples in Lawrence that he could recall where there wasn't necessarily complete enclosure. I called Agent Ls, who's the local ABC agent who will be enforcing their regulations. He indicated that, that some gap in a three-dimensional barrier is permissible, you don't necessarily need a gate. The extent of that gap, I think, is up to the approval process of ABC, but he indicated we wouldn't need a gate to allow access and completely enclose that dining area.
Right. Any other questions about any particulars on there?
And the ordinance was modified to reflect the ABC standard as being what works for us.
Okay. Great, thank you. Okay. I have no clue where we are, but that's okay. Okay. So really, that just brings us up to, we're going to have the two motions today on this issue. The one is the, the first is the second reading, is that correct?
Correct.
And then the second is going to be, sorry? Is the second a second reading as well, is that right?
Second is, we held the resolution until you had taken a second reading action on the ordinance, so.
That's right, that's right. Okay, so we've got a second reading and a first reading on there, okay. Is there anyone from the public here with anything to add or comment on this? Didn't think so, but it never hurts to ask. Okay, well, then I'd bring it back for possible action on ordinance 14-710739.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt on second reading ordinance number 14-10739 as amended.
Second.
Have a motion as second to adopt ordinance number 14-10739. And we need a roll call for this, correct?
Commissioner Blanchard?
Aye.
Commissioner Crawford?
Aye.
Commissioner Hardy?
Aye.
Commissioner Shirley?
Aye.
Mayor, Householder?
Aye. That motion carries in 5-0.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve resolution number 14-7111 as amended.
Second.
Have a motion as second to adopt resolution number 14-7111. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries 5-0. We have no development business, any other business?
Mr. Mayor, I would, I have something.
Okay, sure.
With the recent bicycle accidents in Salina, it is evident to me that we should consider steps to make drivers more aware of bike riders and to make biking safer for all Salinans. Because of higher gas prices and an increased awareness of the health benefits of exercise, biking and hiking will and should become a more important means of transportation in our city. We have a plan in place to add to our bike hike inventory annually. I think it would be prudent to consider accelerating that program by dedicating a portion of the increased funding that we voted on last year for street maintenance and dedicate it to our hike bike trail program for the next two or three years to provide better options for bikes and hikers. I think that we should consider adding sharrows or bike lanes on our major streets or busier residential streets included in our master plan to make them more bike residential streets included in our master plan to make them more bike friendly. I also think that we should consider adding to our inventory of trails to make access to retail or downtown more accessible from various parts of Salina. I believe that by increasing our emphasis on bike hike trails to include more of our central city areas, we may decrease the incidence of biking accidents in our city.
Mr. Gage, if we wanted to look at doing some change like that, the time of that, of course, is budget time, CIP, that sort of timing?
Yeah, the time is budget time, that is the proper time to do that. And some of the things you need to think about, first of all, right now, we don't have data on our bicycle accidents. We have really no idea how safe unsafe in between we are. So, probably would make sense for us to try to get you that information between now and then, if we can isolate that and compare it, because we can look at it, we can compare it against ourselves, but we really need to look at it with regards to other communities and try to get it in something where you can really synthesize it. So, that's one thing we can do. The other thing is, we need to think about, you need to think about really, the value difference between the bicycle aspects and just pure streets. So, that's, that's just something we don't have to have any direction on today. You know, you can say, let's hold this question, bring it back later, we can try to cover it as we get further in the budget and study session and bring up some of these issues, but that's the main value issue that you have. Then the other question is, is how much of the street dollars would you be interested in putting towards the bicycle trails, sharrows, whatever, whatever those aspects are, recognizing that some of that's going to result in some operating dollars as well, we'll have to try to estimate, but it all depends on where that money goes.
Now, we still have a program, just, just to kind of bring us up to speed on some bicycle things, do we still have some helmet programs here, one aspect? And then, do we have anybody, you know, I talked to the Bike Across Kansas group, a good, good bunch of people, and one of the things I noticed is when I was a youngster, everybody, oh, it's a youngster, the old, just saying youngster.
I caught that too.
When I was a younger child than I am now, you know, it seemed like everybody rode their bikes back then, and now nobody, none of the kids do. And I know we've, we've become a more mobile and gas-oriented society and things are just different. Does, and I hate to add on to anybody's workload, and if Deion's at home watching, rest is me, which I'm sure he is glued to the TV set with the exciting city commission meeting, but do we have anything with our recreation commission that goes out and does any outreach to schools or talks to them about it? Because I think as Commissioner Hardy said, I mean, this is a, is a health issue. I mean, we look at how states rate, and the ones with the most bike trails always end up with like the happiness level, and I mean, it just seems like things go hand in hand. You don't know which came first, the, you know, chicken or the egg, whether happy people make bike trails or bike trails make people happy. But, but it is a health issue, and we can all agree that more physical fitness would benefit our community. So, I definitely, you know, take note of that aspect of it. And I just didn't know if our, if our recreation commission had any sort of outreach that went and talked to the schools and talked about it, and then on the other hand, you know, we need to make sure they're safe routes, we don't want to tell kids to go play Frogger on the street on a bicycle, you know what I mean? And so, just a thought, again, I hate to add to their workload, I'm sure they're busy with everything they do already, but just.
We can check, I know that the police department historically has done bicycle safety classes, and Parks and Rec may actually have done some of that as well. I don't know that the Parks and Rec Advisory Board has gone out, those members, and created a program where they go out and, and talk about that, that's possible, but I really doubt it, I don't think that's the case. What I would tell you though, is when you characterize this, it's only safety if we can find data that suggests we have a safety issue.
Right.
It's not to say that it's wrong to emphasize it, we've tried to emphasize it, and you can emphasize it as much as you want, but you're going to be trading off, and so, you need to, what we need to know is, is, I mean, if you want us to call it safety without real data to suggest it, we can do that, but that's recreational, and that's okay too, if that's what you want to do. But I would suggest that if we truly are going to publicly state that it's a safety issue, there needs to be data to suggest that, otherwise you're making a recreational decision. Either one's fine, I just, I would not want to tell the public we have a safety issue, in fact, we've never looked at it and we don't know.
Correct.
So, that's a real important thing.
It's a good point. And having two, obviously, two in one day does tend to dry your attention, but when we look statistically and we're, you know, fifty percent below other communities our size, we still wish it was safer, of course, but it isn't truly a safety issue.
Well, we just don't know. We've never, we've never had reason at this point to believe that we have any safety issues with bicycles compared to other comparable communities. I will say, and I agree, that the more opportunities you provide for trails, you know, off-street opportunities, and if there, for those who like to ride in the street, the sharrows and other things, although we've not experimented with a sharrow, a sharrow is not, it's common in some areas, it's not common here. It's, I'd say it's likely to, it's probably reasonable to infer that that would reduce certain safety interactions between a vehicle and a car on the roadway. I don't know that, because you're actually going to increase potentially, you might increase the number of bicyclists, which might actually increase. We really don't know that, but the thought being is, is that there's a lot of things you can spend dollars on, you can spend dollars on, trails can eat it up very fast, the off-street stuff. That's the safest route. If we want to put it into sharrows, it's really more of a, a lot of it's marking, engineering, some of that type of thing. So, it just depends, but right now, we don't have a lot of analysis behind some of that yet.
And we've been, we've been addressing that too, I believe, just with, with the Iron Street, reconstruction, our complete streets, sort of our goals with the complete streets. And then the other thing too, I might add is, and Dean's here, he may be able to speak to it, but I know that the planning commission has had on their to-do list, and maybe it's done list, it's been checked off as a bicycle master plan.
Yeah, the thing that's lacking, we kind of have at least a conceptual off-street trails plan. What we're working with the bicycle advisory committee and planning commission on is, we need to have an on-street bike plan, a bike route plan that everybody agrees with that would come back to you and be adopted as part of the comprehensive plan to say, these are our preferred on-street bike routes, and you would want to have that in place before you started thinking about bike lanes or sharrows or things like that, there needs to be an agreed upon, these are safe bicycle routes that connect the city, that have low traffic, that are suitable for bicycling, and these are the routes that we want to stripe or mark with sharrows. And we're moving towards that direction, and hopefully sometime this year, we'll have something to come for you to adopt as part of an on-street bike route plan.
I think that's a longer, kind of a longer-term thing. To me, I look at that as a longer-term ideal to have that.
Well, I mean, you really, you really need a plan and agree before you just go out and start marking streets, or you don't want to put bike lanes or sharrows on a street that no bicyclist is going to use. So, you want to get input from the bicycling community, get an agreed upon on-street set of routes, and then say, all right, now we're going to start phasing in the lanes and the sharrows.
Mr. Director, I was, you might be able to help with this too. I remember at one point, there were bike lanes on Marymount, for instance, between Crawford and Iron, and then they disappeared.
Yes.
Is there a reason for that?
Primarily maintenance.
Just for the paint, you mean?
Yeah, maintaining, and the fact that it didn't get built on, the network didn't get built on, but the two things that we've been looking at historically is that there were actually bike, green bike route signs on a number of streets throughout the community, and there were also on Marymount and East Iron designated, painted bike lanes on the street, but it never went beyond East Iron or Marymount Road, and then there were a lot of signs to maintain and pavement markings, and then it just disappeared.
But with Iron, we'll be getting a little closer to that.
Right, so, what we've been working on with the planning commission and bicycle advisory committee is resurrecting those old things, here's the old bike route map, here's places where we used to have lanes, which of these are still of value, and hopefully bring something back to you and say, well, let's have a plan first before we go out and try to mark pavement.
Talking about bike racks downtown, it'd be nice to be able to use them.
Yep.
Safely. Safely.
Thank you.
There you go.
Any other business? Ms. Hodges has something for us? Having relations to bikes, I don't know.
Yes, it actually does. Melissa Hodges with Salina Downtown. I just wanted to let you know that several different departments in the city have been part of this bicycle advocacy group that meets about monthly, maybe every other month here now that we're in the summer. And basically, we've been putting together a plan to become a bronze metal city by the Bicycle Federations of America. And so, basically, the maps and things that the bicyclists are working on right now is to figure out where our best connectivity is, which, which streets make sense to be north, south, or east, west streets used for bicyclists. And we've also had discussions about USD 305 and safe bike routes to school, and I have to admit off the top of my head, I can't remember what the status of that program is, but they do have a program within USD 305, the safe, safe bike routes to school, so.
Thank you. Any other business?
I did want to just compliment Community Access. I recently was over there and was interviewed, and I just think that they're doing a great job under their new direction over there, and, and I would encourage people to tune in to Community Access, channel twenty or channel twenty-one. And the other thing is, I, and Melissa left, but I wanted to say that they do have their, the happy video on Community, or, if you, if you, if you go to salinatellevision.org, I believe it is, at the bottom, there's the happy video, and it's just really cute.
Starring the commission?
I didn't get to see it when it was. Yeah, starring the city commission, but anyway.
City manager. And you notice they wait till the end of the video almost to put us on.
They are doing a good job over there, and I just want to compliment them.
And they are always looking for volunteers too, that want to come in and produce programs.
Yes, need volunteers.
Commissioners, real quick, back on the bike thing, just real quickly, it's, it's not likely that we'll have a formalized bike plan with cost estimates by August budget time. We might, but I don't want to push Steph any further with other stuff that you got us working on. If that's the case, then what we're probably looking at, and I want to see if this makes sense to you, is if you, if you are truly wanting to dedicate additional dollars over to that side from what would be typical street maintenance side, we will, first of all, we'll need to see where those dollars come from. Likely it'd have to be sales tax, because I don't, it depends what it is, I guess it depends what we do with it, but the question is, is we can put some dollars and we can just basically consider it a contingency that could be used either way going into two thousand and fifteen, that says, okay, at that time, say in August, we'll hold back X dollars, fifty thousand, hundred thousand, two hundred thousand, whatever you decide, we'll put it over here while we're still considering bike plans, and when we get to the point that we know what we have, then we'll, we can, we can talk about how to allocate it, but it will not be allocated for either, we kind of set aside, and then at that point later, you can decide to do that, decide what you really want to do with that. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does.
So, that we keep it in front of you, keep it alive, but yet not put the cart before the horse, so to speak.
Right.
And it would be interesting if we have the data, just to know, I mean, since the question was posed, how, how we are doing sort of.
Yeah, I've got a note to, because we haven't been asked, we really don't know.
And I don't know how we traditionally kept records over there, you know, with, with police department, if they, I'm sure they do, there's a form for everything, but I'm sure, you know, I would guess pedestrian and, and, and basically any non-motorized vehicle accident.
Well, and based on the latest Saline County Health Assessment, probably the biggest safety concern is, is that they identified obesity as probably the biggest health concern in the county. So, I think when we provide more opportunities for people to live healthy, then, I mean, it's not safety while you're on the bike, but it's, it's overall health and safety.
I agree, and I just, from a, from a municipal perspective, when we assert safety is an issue, that communicates from this organization to the citizenry that it is.
Right.
I don't want to do that.
Right.
We have data to suggest that, so.
Yeah, good point.
We can, we can look it up and see where we're at, see where we fall, and then go from there, but you may choose even whether safety is an issue or not, that you just feel you want to accelerate that, and that's not a problem, that's certainly something you can do, so.
Yeah.
I think we need to have the facts before us.
Yeah, but I'm with you, I think the health, health angle.
But the health assessment would be a good document to throw into the mix, so.
Well, and, and safety may, when you, when you talk about safety, it can be perceived as real safety or perceived safety. For instance, if you're riding your bicycle down Ohio, you may think you're safe when you're really not, and if a bike lane is there, say, you may have an extra degree, feel an extra degree of safety as opposed to no bike lane. So, that, that could also feed into a situation where somebody was more likely to ride down Ohio if there's a bike lane than if there's not. Or if there's no designation at all, that the, that Ohio is, should be considered safe for bikes.
Yeah, I'm not sure we're going to be able to.
Yeah, stay off Ohio.
Yeah, I was just saying, I know the bikers will hate you for this, but stay off Ohio, it's not wide enough, yeah, yeah. Pick the lanes with shoulders, that's probably a smart move.
That's just, yeah, an example.
I think somebody had a good editorial, wasn't that in the paper the other day? Mentioned again, it simply said, you know, one thing to remember is just because you have a right to be there, doesn't mean that it always works out in the end for you, so. We've got any other?
I have something real quick for Mayor and Commissioners in reference to the board appointments that we had.
Oh, yes.
I was appointed to a board that I cannot attend, I have a huge scheduling conflict on the building advisory board.
Oh, okay.
Eight-thirty on Tuesdays. I had talked to Jason earlier, and he said to address it, maybe someone could change, trade a board with me for an earlier meeting, I know Travel and Tourism's at seven-thirty, I know that one would work better with my work schedule.
Commissioner Crawford's already on Travel and Tourism, but I'll, I'll take that Building Authority Board, because I was just most recently on it, so I'm fine with taking that.
Okay, you don't mind the extra workload?
And I would, I'd be more than willing if Kay wanted to give me the other one or do some kind of trade. I don't know.
Well, if you can just take it on, it doesn't add any hardships, no need to trade.
I'm good.
Yeah, okay. Do we need to make a motion or do any changes on that, or?
Well, it's, that's a good question. I, I think when you, if I recall, I think you did, you probably used a motion when you made those appointments before. The problem with those, which is, this is why we brought the liaison stuff back to you, is because, as you probably know now, your role as a liaison is, is really the same as any citizen, it's, you can't go on executive sessions, you're just there, and, and requesting everybody's, you know, preferences, a lot of times that does lead to schedules versus other things. The idea is that, that we, if, for those who want to be on certain boards, if we can, and I say we pretty broadly, because you guys get to decide that, we really don't, but.
That's fine.
But to try to fit you wherever everybody finds a place and a niche for them that meets their schedule and likes, problem is, is that's not always possible, because, you know, with, with five folks, you're diverse in your schedules, you're diverse in your likes, and it's really hard to match that up. But I think, as, my recommendation as a preference would be to try to find a board for Commissioner Shirley that can meet that, if possible, if it doesn't create too much disruption, because it'd be nice if, for all of you who want to, to be on a, to be able to attend a board, but what it is, I don't know, that's really for you guys to talk about more, but that's really what the intent is.
Right, but the Building Advisory Board is, is a voting board, it's not a liaison.
The Building Advisory, that's correct, the Building Advisory Board is a voting governance board of this building, that is correct.
Are you talking about the Building Authority Board?
I'm sorry. Building Advisory.
Building Advisory Board.
Well, okay, yeah, I'm speaking more the Building Authority Board, but.
Yeah, well, I'm on the.
Building Authority, okay, sorry.
Yeah, because advisories are different, but.
Right, but it is a voting.
It is a voting board, right.
So, we have two commissioners on that.
Do we need to just have you bring back an amended resolution, or what do we need to?
Well, I wouldn't know how to draw it up, because I don't know how that will work, to be honest with you.
Commissioner Shirley can't attend the Building Authority.
Did we pass the board, did we pass the board appointments by resolution or not, or just by passing it?
I think it was resolution.
The, the citizen appointments you do by resolution, the resolution is the recommendation of the mayor, and then you vote on the resolution. I'm not, I can't recall, I, I thought you did the other appoint, your appointments, I believe that was through a motion, or was it just through?
I thought by mayoral fiat is how.
Well, maybe it was.
I like to sound, get used to that word out there. There's going to be a heck of a lot more of those, I tell you. Was that fiat?
Yeah, and that's, that's really a practice more, because there's no policy, there's no.
Okay, so if I simply say, okay, he's going to that board, if somebody has another one, the only question I have, and I know we were trying to get out of here by five, and I don't want to throw everything out, but on the, the steering committee or the group that we meet out at Phillips', it seems odd to have, the former mayor and the mayor, it'd make most sense, I would think, to have the mayor and potential upcoming mayor for that. It's just, I know, I know Commissioner Shirley's on that with me, but it seems like that's the kind of thing where, it's kind of, it's like one of those things, you kind of want to ease somebody into it, seems odd that the mayor all of a sudden.
Yeah, the first, first thing is, you don't, have never recognized that as an advisory board appointment anyway.